Everyone, please take your seats. We're going to get started with our meeting. Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock PM on Tuesday, May 27, 2025. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Peoria City Council and bring our meeting to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Welcome also to our audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Carmona.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer, silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes from the special joint city council meeting of May 6, 2025, and the May 13, 2025, meeting as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. Twenty-five dash one twenty-seven is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with request to approve existing liability insurance coverages, cyber liability coverage, crime coverage, and service fee with the city's existing broker of record, Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, in an amount not to exceed $868,892. Twenty-five dash one twenty-eight is a communication with request to approve a professional services agreement with Cloudpoint Geospatial, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $57,600. Twenty-five dash one twenty-nine is a communication with request for the following: A, adopt an ordinance authorizing the amendments to the intergovernmental agreement for participation in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network; and B, approve an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network providing for membership. Twenty-five dash one thirty is a communication with request for the following: A, approve a highway authority agreement between the city of Peoria and VRG Properties Company for the property known as 3907 North Sheridan Road, Peoria, Illinois; and B, adopt an ordinance pertaining to Schedule A of Chapter 31 of the Code of the City of Peoria prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or by any other method. Twenty-five dash one thirty-one is a communication with request for the following: A, approve a highway authority agreement for the city of Peoria for the property known as 356D Southwest Adams Street, Peoria, Illinois; and B, adopt an ordinance pertaining to Schedule A of Chapter 31 of the Code of the City of Peoria prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or by any other method. Twenty-five dash one thirty-two is a communication with request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class I-III general industrial district for the manufacturing of goods from composting organic material, natural gas reclamation for the property located at 2322 South Darce Street, Peoria, Illinois. Twenty-five dash one thirty-three is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance granting a variance from certain provisions of the Flood Damage Prevention and Control Ordinance for the Greater Peoria Sanitary District at 2322 South Darce Street. Twenty-five dash one thirty-four is a reappointment by Mayor Ali to the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees with request to concur of Catherine Hardy. Twenty-five dash one thirty-five is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Public Library Board of Trustees with request to concur of Scott Driscoll. And twenty-five dash one thirty-six is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Urban Forestry Advisory Board with request to concur of Elsie Hayes. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Is there any item to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are on to regular business. Twenty-five dash one thirty-seven is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to adopt an ordinance replacing the existing special use ordinance 15077 with a special use in a Class C-2 large-scale commercial district and a Class C-1 general commercial district for a shopping center for the property located at 3624 and 3622 North University Street and 1205 West Florence Avenue, Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually going to turn it over to our Assistant Community Development Director, Leah Allison, who will walk through this item.
Thank you, Ms. Manager, Council Madam Mayor. So, the proposal before you tonight is the, located at the corner of War Memorial Drive and University Street. Very visible corner, popular corner. Start with a little bit of background. The whole development site is about four and a half acres. It's previously used for auto sales. It's been vacant or unused for about 10 years. And the buildings that were there have been razed. The property, the site, has been leveled and graded, priming it for a new use, a new development. So, the request before you today is for development on one and a half acres of that four and a half total located at the corner, right at the corner of University and War Memorial. The proposed use includes two potential drive-through-only restaurant sites, independent of each other. The first primary user is for a drive-through of about 986 square feet in size. What we've heard through the petitioner is may be a Dutch Brothers coffee. The second site on that one and a half acres is not yet identified as a user, but could be another drive-through restaurant facility. This whole area, four and a half acres, is part of the University of War Memorial TIF that was established in 2021. Okay? Staff has reviewed the site, the development. We do have some concerns with access. Currently, access is available through two existing drive approaches, one on University, and the second access is off of Florence Avenue. Okay, there's no direct access from War Memorial Drive. The staff recommendation with access on Florence is left-in, right-out only. That's really to ensure that traffic is directed to the intersection of Florence and University, which is a lighted intersection, a full access lighted intersection control there. The staff recommendation for the second point of access, which is University Street, is again restricted to right-in, right-out only. Staff has concerns about congestion, traffic, safety for those southbound vehicles on University trying to enter and exit the site. And so, the staff recommendation does include a limited or controlled access of right-in, right-out, primarily for safety of traffic. I'm going to highlight three conditions that are included with this recommendation, which I should back up. We are recommending approval, but we do have some concerns, as I mentioned, for that access. And then, three conditions, just to bring to your attention, reiterating that, the entrance, again, to and from University, right-in, right-out. Access to and from Florence, left-in, right-out. And then, thirdly, staff is asking for a traffic impact study, just to really ensure that vehicle access to and from this site is safe, controlled, in an appropriate manner. That's staff summary. Can I answer any questions for you? The petitioner is present as well. Happy to answer questions.
Director Allison, when would, how long would this study take and when would it begin?
You know, that is really probably, we would welcome it as soon as possible. And it would be a study that we would ask the petitioner to be involved with, to produce those, you know, definitive traffic data that would help make sure that this is safe, accessible property.
Can you estimate how long the study might take?
I think it does take a few months.
Okay.
Yeah. And it may, you know, just for that level, it may take a few months.
Okay. And does this motion as is, it includes those special conditions?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Carmona?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, well, first, I want to thank the staff for all their diligent work and throughout this whole process. I know a lot goes into it, and I do understand why these recommendations are being made. I was wondering, though, Madam Mayor, if I can give the developer the privilege to say a few words on the floor?
Yes.
Before we proceed?
Sure. Thank you.
My name's Todd Rothfeyzen. I'm with the RSCC Group out of Rockford, Illinois. We are a third-generation family-owned business, celebrating the 58th year in business. I've asked to be adopted, but I'm not a member of the family. I'm simply an employee for the company. But I can tell you, they're a great company and a great family to work for. Historically, we've developed 300 Walgreens, 100 CVSs, over 100 QSRs, quick-service restaurants, which is what we would refer this to, or this as, if you will. It's interesting. I came across Dutch Bros Coffee. We do a lot of Starbucks, too. We're delivering to Starbucks in Mohammed, Illinois right now. We're kind of on a coffee kick, to be honest with you. It's very popular, high-growth. I was visiting my kids who live in Vancouver, Washington, and they said, Dad, this is about four years ago. They said, Dad, we're going to go get a Dutch. And I'm like, what are you talking about? And I said, we're going to go get a Dutch Bros. And I'm like, okay, you know, what didn't Rome do is the Romans do. So, I went to my first Dutch Bros in Vancouver. It's 963 square foot. As a developer for the last 25 years, I'm like, well, this looks pretty cool. And it had a double drive-through, stacked 18 cars, which is how this one is designed. I can tell you, the coffee's really good, and the cold drinks are really good. I can also tell you, I was thoroughly impressed with how they managed their drive-through. We've all seen a Chick-fil-A, we've all seen a Portillo's, and we do Portillo's as well. And they can cause a lot of traffic issues and a lot of problems. Dutch does it differently. Dutch has order boards, but you do not place your order at the order board. They have live people, two of them, sitting out in the drive-through lane with iPads. It's extremely orderly. It's extremely efficient. And their historic records, they have 1,021 stores in the United States right now. Their goal is to grow to 2,000 by 2029. We are in the process of doing 24 different locations across the United States. They are extremely efficient, extremely smooth. About one vehicle every four to five minutes exits the drive-through. We currently have one that's going to be the first one in downstate Illinois going into Urbana at the corner of Green and Lincoln. If anybody knows Champagne, Urbana, it rivals the traffic at University and War Memorial. And we don't anticipate any traffic issues there. We use AI currently for traffic analysis before we go to city council, before we take a look at a site, so we know what we're facing. We use Perplexity, we use ChatGPT, and we use Grok. All three of those traffic studies, I provided those at the previous meeting, basically predict that 90% to 96% of the traffic that is visiting that Dutch Bros will already be utilizing University and War Memorial, which means it's experienced traffic. And that's a benefit because people with a McDonald's there and otherwise, they find the most efficient way in, and they find the most efficient way out. Consumers are very good at that. They predict, relative to the business historical model of Dutch Bros, minimal, if any, impact on the traffic flow at that intersection. So, we feel very comfortable. We are not against the staff's recommendation for a traffic study. They cost between $7,500 and $10,000 and take four to six weeks. So, that's why we use AI to make sure that we budget that in the process. The other thing I'd like to really stress, and we do, like I said, anywhere between 30 to 60 QSRs a year, depending upon the economy, Dutch Bros is a tremendous asset to the community. They're not just another drive-through. Their employees are involved. They're very philanthropic. They bring tremendous energy and a commitment to the marketplace. They will be an asset to the city of Peoria, not just in the product that they provide, but in how they do business. They truly are members of the community, and I cannot differentiate enough relative to that, doing this for 25 years. Not all of them are, but Dutch Bros is. The access that we request is critical to approval. We have initial approvals through real estate committee confirming the access and the results of the city meeting tonight. Unless there's questions, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to just quickly speak to the experience I've had with Dutch Brothers. As many of you know, I'm from Colorado, and I was, I came from a town, small town called Windsor, but this town, Windsor, had a main corridor running right through it. It was also, it was called Main Street, but it was also known as Highway 392. Dutch Brothers came in and proposed to put a development right off of that busy intersection where tens of thousands of cars and semis go through there a day. It's very busy. And so, the community had similar, you know, they had similar issues or problems with letting this pass because of the potential for more traffic and congestion. I will tell you, though, it was very surprising how efficient this company is, and it's almost like it's not even there. And on top of that, it's right on the edge of a neighborhood. It's surrounded by houses. They're very friendly. And so, I'm a really big advocate for this project to be passed. I do, like I said, understand where staff is coming from. University and War Memorial is a very busy intersection. The thing that I don't want to happen is that if Dutch Bros walks away from this, then I think it's safe because we restrict their access on to University and off to University. I think it's safe to say that the lot will probably remain vacant for years to come, and it will negatively impact the ability for a developer to do anything there. On top of that, there are citizens who will be impacted as well because there are owners who own that land, and their property will become a lot less viable and valuable if we impose this onto this new development. And so, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 27 dash 130, sorry, 25 dash 137, replacing the existing special use ordinance with a Class 2 and Class 1 for the property at 3624 and 3622 North University and 1205 West Florence without the suggested North University restricted entrance modifications.
So, would that be without all one through 11?
No, I would say number one and number three, because the Florence neighborhood, and understandably, would like to keep traffic out of their neighborhood. So, the left turn in and the right turn out only is very logical for that neighborhood. So, I would say just striking number one and number three, especially to expedite the process of getting this in place.
Okay. And the owner did say he did not object to the traffic study?
Oh, he did not object to the traffic study.
That's, that's what I heard. Was that correct?
Okay. We'll strike number one, then.
Okay. So, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. And Councilmember Gordon Young, you had a comment, I think?
Well, I did, but it sort of got answered. I was confused in terms of the owner agreeing to the impact study. Not confused, but I was going to ask about that. But I do want to say that I drove around. People probably thought I was losing it, but I drove around just to see what that area would feel like from every possible access, from Meadow Brook, northbound, southbound, all those different areas. And initially, I was a little bit concerned until I actually drove it and thought about how we are accustomed to slowing down for people who are turning onto Florence or going into Walgreens or going into McDonald's. And for some of us who have been in the area, because I live a block north of it long enough, remember when it was a car dealership as well. And so, I do understand the point that you're making, Councilmember Carmona. And so, that is why I seconded that motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is Ms. Allison, did she leave the room?
She's still, yes. Director Allison?
No, it's okay. If she's gone, it's okay. I'm sure Mr. Urick can answer the question. Is she there in the back? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. What is the, any, if any, financial commitment from the city for this development?
None, other than it's in the TIF.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Welcome. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want a little clarification on that number three, though, Councilman Carmona, because the way it's, the condition is that prior to the issuance of permits, so.
Oh.
Will that delay the project detrimentally? That would be my question, I guess, for the developer.
Director?
Or?
Director Allison?
Sure. Yes, the way it's written, it would expect the impact study to be delivered to us before permits are issued. Could I also add, as Director Doolan pointed out, if you're, as a suggestion?
Yes.
Eliminating the first condition with the restricted access at University, there may not be a need for the traffic impact study, since we were really concerned about access at University. If you're going to eliminate restricted access, meaning that it will be open for right and left, in and out both ways, you may not feel there's, there may no longer be need for an impact study, just a suggestion for your discussion.
So, that could go back to your first.
Sorry.
I think the second came from Councilwoman Gordon Young. You still have the floor, Councilman.
So, if we strike number one, the need for number three is gone. So.
He may, he may go back and strike both again.
All right. I think that, for clarity's sake, that would be a good, good recommendation. That's, I just wanted to clarify that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Thank you.
To everybody around the horseshoe, as you know, I'm new to this, so thank you for guiding me through this. But yes, I would like to, do I need to repeat the whole thing?
Okay.
Very good. Okay.
So, your motion, can you restate your motion, then?
Right, yes. Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 25 dash 137, replacing the existing special use ordinance with a Class C-2 and Class C-1 for the property at 3624 and 3622 North University and 1205 West Florence without the suggested North University restricted entrance modifications of number one and number three on the conditions and waivers.
That's seconded by Councilmember Gordon, Gordon Young. Question, Director Allison, what if we find problems? What if we find down the road that there is major congestion, that there is a problem that we didn't adopt right-in and right-out only? Then, then how do we address it?
Well, that may be something our Public Works Department could review the design of the street on University, or maybe we can initiate a conversation with the developers of the property to try and, you know, remedy if there are some, some significant issues with access.
Okay. Might we, at that time, pursue a study, a traffic study? Is that a possibility?
It could be. I don't want to speak for Public Works, but I'm sure that they would probably want to review through their means, you know, traffic flow and counts and safety.
Mr. Manager?
There we go. If, if at a later date it necessitates a traffic study, it would be on the city's nickel. We'd have to do that. I mean, it's, at this point, you know, you're, you know, if you're requiring enough the developer to do the traffic study now to determine whether or not left-in and left-out is safe, that now is the time to do that. If you don't want to do that, then, and you want to say, we're going to allow full access, then we're going to come back later if it's not safe and say, we're going to do a traffic study in order to show you that it's not safe. So, it would be on the city's nickel at that point in time.
We have a motion on the floor, and a second. Any more comments or questions?
Mayor Lee? Mayor Lee?
Corporation Council Hayes?
Thank you. I just had a point of clarification to Councilman Seer's question about the financial commitments that the city's made to this development. When the development was cleared, leveled, and the access road that's present now was stubbed in, the developer asked for and received a tax increment financing agreement from the city that indicated that the 75% of the increment from those properties in the TIF would go towards resolving the debts from that, or the cost of those improvements, which was originally about $980,000. And there's been little progress, not much, but a little progress on that, $10,000 a year or so since the property transaction took place a couple of years ago. So, there's still a considerable amount of commitment by the city to reimburse those original site improvement costs that all of that property will benefit from going forward.
Okay.
I want to make that clear. And the other thing is, by granting access now, that's a valuable right, if we attempt to re- a valuable right, if we attempt to reduce it because of a traffic study in the future, I would assume that the property owners would say that's a taking, and they would reduce compensation. So if you allow the access now and want to restrict it later, keep in mind that that's a possibility that property owners might assert that we're damaging their property, and we need to pay them to restrict access. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's your question to Corporation, Mr. Corporation Counsel. Are you saying that the entire TIF increment will first go to reimburse the city for site prep? And only after that is satisfied will other benefits of the TIF accrue, some benefits of the TIF accrue to the property owner?
The agreement is that 75% of the annual tax increment finance revenues generated would go towards this reimbursement. The other 25% would remain in the TIF and available at the city's discretion. That would be the division of the first dollars in until that 980 some dollars, 80 some thousand dollars is satisfied. So it's not all of the increment. It's 75% of it, though. Keep in mind that if it fully develops, that debt will be resolved fairly soon. You know, not immediately, but as these developments occur, property values will rise considerably on that property, as will the tax increment. And so we think that that debt would be serviced faster. It's hard to know
Yes.
without knowing what all the different uses would be, what's, what might be the time required to satisfy that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corporation Counsel. And thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted some clarity on that issue, so we all know what's, what's up.
Sure. I'm compelled to vote no on the modification, only because I think it, this is, it's a safety issue not to have the right in and right out on university only. That's one of our, one of the busiest intersections that we have in the city, and I don't want to delay the project at all. I'd love to see a, a traffic study as well, traffic impact study as well, and maybe it will come to that down the road, but it looks like if it, if it gets approved with the modification, then the city is responsible for, fully responsible for the cost. Is that correct? Did I interpret that correctly, Mr. Manager? If it comes later, then it's, it's just the city's responsibility, and it's not a shared responsibility. So I'm concerned about the, the safety at not, not restricting the access to university for right in and right out only. Other than that, I'm excited about the development, the Dutch Brothers' business in the city of Peoria. I welcome that. But again, I think safety is, is not my number one concern in not having a study early on. Anything that you need to add, Director Allison?
No, unless you have questions.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, okay. Excuse me. Councilwoman Gordon Young?
Just have a question regarding the, the cost of the study. Is it possible to incorporate, if the study was needed in the future, where we would split the cost? I don't know who to ask that question to. Maybe that's for you, Corporation Counsel.
Well, it's a little tough to make that arrangement at 6:30 in the evening at a city council meeting with a developer who I'm sure is eager to get the project underway. So it's certainly something the city could discuss. I would indicate that there's some limited TIF increment available to the city that could be utilized for that, so, you know, the 25% that does come to the city, I don't know that that would cover the full cost at this time, but there is, there are some assets in that TIF right now that we could utilize the TIF to do that. The developer hasn't asked, as far as I know, for any, you know, development assistance or anything, and so there's a number of ways that we could look at our retail entity as generating increment that we could make use of for these types of expenses, so. But I don't have the ability to get that agreement right now.
No, I'm just asking if it's possible.
Yes. I think it's possible, but there's nothing that would control the developer at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Now that I'm the senior member of the council, it's my privilege to sit back and say, well, I remember, remember about five years ago when Club Car Wash was coming in to Glennon University? Remember the horror stories we heard about the mess that was going to create?
I do.
One of the things that we ended up doing was allowing left turns out of there. We made them put in a second, a lane, a dedicated left turn lane, which is already in this plan. But I think it's, it's important to note that drivers are oftentimes smarter than we give them credit for. And if I'm trying to make a left turn and I sit there for an inordinate amount of time, the next time I go there, I'm going to make a right and flip down War Memorial and down Sher, do, do whatever I need to do. I, I think sometimes we suffer that, what, what's that expression, paralysis by analysis? And I, I think this is a thought out proposal. I, I think the studies that the developer has done have some credibility that we need to respect. And with the Second District Councilmen supporting this, I, I'm going to remain committed and support this as well as, as amended.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have a motion on the floor, and a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Ali. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
25-138 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Counsel with a request to approve the site application for a Class A Tavern liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for S&amp;A Hospitality LLC, doing business as Love Shack at 800 Southwest Adams, Suite 106, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our Corporation Counsel to walk through this one.
Counsel Hayes?
Thank you, Your Honor. As the council may recall, this item was previously site-approved. The same exact premises are part of this request. As it relates to the site approval, there was a split at the Liquor Commission, but it was three to two to approve. So the licenser issues that have been in the press and were part of the discussion at the, at the Liquor Commission really are part of the licensing process under our ordinances rather than the site approval. With regard to the site approval, is this a physical location that would support the amenity of the requested uses? The answer to that question is yes, it is. And I think that that's consistent with staff's analysis as well as the recommendations on both occasions of the Liquor Commission. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Corporation Counsel? I'm going to turn to you, Councilwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I have had an opportunity to eat at the pop-up chick, and I've been there a few times, and I must say, the ambiance is beautiful, the food is delicious, and it's in the heart of the Warehouse District, so I will support this application. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Is there a second? Is there a second by Councilwoman Gordon Young? Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
25-139 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended March 31, 2025, unaudited financial report.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is our monthly financial report. I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Director, Kyle Craddy.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. In your packet is the month ended March financial report. Few of the highlights, overall revenues are down 8.9% compared to the estimated budget, and 6% down versus 2020, versus 2024. Looking at that, I know that can obviously be a little alarming on face value. What we obviously are seeing in 2025 in comparison to 2024, especially interstate sources, is we just don't have as many grant dollars as we had in previous years, so some of that, what you're seeing is just not having grant reimbursements in those numbers. Overall, we're actually seeing relatively strong state sales tax as well as home rule sales tax, as well as income tax receipts that you see on the pages further back. We have seen actually close to a 20% increase in both of those sources. The, the state made some changes in terms of the distribution of out-of-state sales tax, as well as a new sales tax on certain rental, certain rental equipment. And so we're still trying to figure out exactly how much we're up compared to the loss that we have in use tax, but we're still seeing relatively strong numbers, and those will start to show in next month's report. On the expense side, we're down 4.8% compared to the expected budget and 6.8% compared, compared to the 2024 year-to-date actuals. One other item I'll just draw attention for Counsel is if you go to page seven of the report, getting into kind of the cash flow position. So we are seeing cash flow start to go a little bit down. We anticipated that in some of the, the budget the last few years. We've had some relatively high cash flows that we've been spending down for capital projects and those kind of things. So at this point, it's not an alarming change. It is just slightly down like we anticipated during the budget process. And then secondarily, if you go to page eight, we are still trying to, in a interest rate environment that we're starting to see declines in interest rates as the Federal Reserve continues to pull back interest rates, we're attempting to lock in some long-term interest rates. So if you look at the report, for example, we have a two-year Treasury bill that technically right now is making less than what liquid cash is. But our anticipation is probably at least half a percent to 75 basis point cut this year from the Federal Reserve, depending on really where the economy is. And so we're trying to bake in some of those returns now, so that when these mature, we're above that liquid cash rate. So I didn't want Council to necessarily have concerns about that change, but that's really kind of the strategy we're, we're undertaking with this. And with that, I'm available if there's any questions from Counsel.
Thank you, Director Craddy. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, thank you for being here. I have a bunch of questions, and I decided to narrow it down to maybe just two or three for sake of time here. The first one would be our cash. You just briefly talked a little about our investment. Do you have any investment policy? Do you design investment, investment policy? Is that directed by the state of Illinois?
So the city itself has an investment policy that is co-written by the Finance Department as well as the Treasurer's Office. That document really mirrors state statute in terms of the limitations that we have and what we can invest in. So as you can imagine, what that, really the primary focus of our investment policy is, one, is to maintain principal, so we want to be in the least risky type investments that there is. And then after that, you know, really, we're looking at things like CDs, US Treasuries, agency bonds, those things that traditionally are considered safe investments, and that's really the limitations we have that are set by state statute.
Do you have any time limitation on CDs example?
The limitation, from a practice standpoint, I traditionally don't go out beyond two years. I think the interest rate market is a little too risky at that point. However, the time horizon has changed recently. I think it's close to a five-year time horizon that we can invest in now. I just, we don't necessarily practice that in our investment policy.
On your, excuse me, page 10 talks about our beginning fund balance. We're about $199 million, and our investable cash, we're around one, that was 166, 166 million. Where's the discrepancy?
So in, in some of it, it's really just a timing issue of things like deposits and transits and, and those kind of things. But also in, for example, the Stormwater Fund, some of those assets are non-liquid. So those, because it is a enterprise fund, some of the value you see is associated with non-liquid assets, so that's really what the discrepancy between what really is the 186 and the 166.
Last question. I really need something to be reassured, because I'm keeping an eye on the general fund, our emergency fund, and I know you are too. I mean, we're going down $13 million in a month, and I understand this is March, the end of March. Can you walk us through a little bit and reassure us a little bit what will happen in April and May to our hopefully emergency fund?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the, two of the largest revenue sources that we get into the general fund is our home rule as well as our state sales tax. Because of kind of our accrual rules, we don't actually see any of those dollars in the general fund until April. Right now, we're trending at that number being close to 5 million, so there'll be around an additional $5 million going in the general fund each month for the rest of the year. So you will start to see that number turn around, and we had anticipated in this last year's budget being close to 40 million for our overall fund balance, and I still anticipate that's where we'll end.
Thank you, Director Craddy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good questions. Thank you. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Craddy, for your consistency in giving us these updates. We appreciate it. This is kind of a hypothetical, so I don't expect an answer tonight, but I would, I am curious, with the state of Illinois and the General Assembly debating whether or not to expand sales tax to services, what kind of impact, has IML or anybody got any numbers together yet on that? How will that drip into the municipalities?
Mr. Manager?
Well, Councilman, I'm, I'm not sure that the expansion of sales taxes to services is going to roll down to localities. I think that this is being discussed as a way to pay for the RTA, the CTA, Metra, and PACE in the Chicago area, so.
Why did I have a feeling that was going to be the answer?
We'll have to wait and see when the dust settles on that legislation.
And where, do you know off the top of your head where that bill is in the?
Well, they're, they're, they're debating it.
They're alive, right?
It is. They're still working through that. It's, it will probably end up as part of the, the overall budget as it gets wrapped up by the state here in the next few days.
Thank you very much.
Entire state will pay.
Entire state will pay.
Just make sure that's clear to everybody. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Can I get a motion to receive and file? A move by Councilmember Valpula, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Thank you, Director Craddy. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk?
25-140 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file report backs requested by Councilmember Seer and Mayor Ali on May 13, 2025.
Mr. Manager?
Well, as you can tell, Director Craddy didn't move. He's going, I'm just going to turn it right over to him again to walk through the report backs. Director?
Oh. Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could ask permission from you, could we, as we go through these questions, there's, I believe, seven of them, can we, can we be able to ask question after each one of them individually instead of waiting until the end?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You don't have to wait to the end.
Yeah, so I'll just go through them individually and then just open it up for questions.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
So the first report back was really a question about what our HRA funds can be used for. So currently, the city has an agreement with the Peoria Civic Center Board that, in essence, there is a cascade of funds, as, as called in the agreement, that of those hotel restaurant amusement tax dollars, there are components that stay with the city, there are components that go to some of our tourism activities, and at the end of that cascade currently, the remaining dollars go to the Civic Center for their operations. And so there's a chart in here that somewhat lays to, does the best of my ability, lays out what that cascade looks like, based off of the budgeted numbers that we have for, for this, this year. The agreement also calls for there to be a one point two million dollar floor on the contribution that's made to the Civic Center. Since that was instituted, I believe, back in twenty twenty-two, the number has always been above that floor, so traditionally, they've gotten more than one point two million. But if we did have a year where our receipts were below this number, and it was below the one point two million dollars, the city would still have to make the contribution of that one point two. And so those are how that, that's how that agreement is laid out right now, so the restrictions on that spending is based off of that agreement. That would be if council wanted to change that, a conversation of council to look at, knowing that one of the largest chunks of the use of funds is the existing debt for the Civic Center, which we do start to see roll off beginning in twenty twenty-seven and then fully in twenty twenty-eight. More than likely, that will be a conversation from, with council in the near future. And with that, I'm available if there's any questions on that specific one.
Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, very impressive results here. Thank you very much for your work on these report backs, very impressive. I want to concentrate on the seven point three million dollars, just for a couple, two or three questions. You answered one of them, is the, the bulk of this amount, which I'm guessing, you and I had many conversations before, it's about six point two million dollars, is that correct? Goes to the debt that will go off the books in twenty twenty-eight, is that correct?
Yeah, so we peak, I believe, next year around seven and a half. We trickle down to about six, then it's about four million, and then it's off the books.
So refresh our memory, the commitment we made to the Civic Center, the investment for upgrades was twenty million dollars?
Correct.
And I know for the first few years with Mr. Manager, we had many conversations about that, we're only paying interest right now on that twenty million dollar loan, correct? What will be the nut in twenty twenty-eight when we make, start making full payment on the twenty million dollar bond that we issue?
Yeah, let me just clarify too, that what I meant when it's off the books, that is really the original debt for the expansion that was done in oh-five. There still is that remaining debt that was issued back in twenty twenty-two. That principal and interest payment is, fluctuates a little bit, but really for that remaining seventeen years is around one point eight million.
I'm sorry?
One point eight million a year.
One point eight would be the total payment for seventeen years.
Correct.
Last question, so that gives us, if we believe, no, if we do seven point three million dollars minus the one point eight, and we're looking, no, five million dollars or so, five, five and a half million, that money, specifically that money, two years from now, I mean, I, there's another report about, you know, the accounts that are, are locked in, that we cannot move money. Where can we, is there's any other ways, or are we at liberty to, however this council wants to spend that money, five, let's say it's five point five million dollars, can we spend that money however this council wants to, wants to do it?
Yes, assuming that the agreement has changed. Right now, how the agreement stands is that remaining dollars would go to the Civic Center for their capital and operations.
An additional five point five million?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important to keep in mind as we talk about the HRA tax, and specifically our contribution to the Civic Center, is that the Civic Center Authority has no bonding authority. They have no ability to raise taxes. We are, I, I, I think oftentimes the discussion gets a little skewed, that we talk about the Civic Center as if it's some outside entity that we have nothing to do with. We are the Civic Center. That is the Peoria, City of Peoria Civic Center, and for us to think otherwise is very short-sighted, I think, and I, I, I think it's extremely important that these subsidies are, are recognized for what they are, and that's an investment into the future of that building. Remember, two weeks ago, we talked about the twenty thousand people that were in downtown Peoria for different events? That doesn't happen without the Civic Center, and, and there's, there's no decision, obviously, here tonight, but I just think we need, I don't like that word subsidy, I think that's Civic Center investment would be a better word, because the reason that the twenty million dollars in bonds needed to be issued was because there weren't, because the, the, the HRA tax continually gets diluted and it cascades into other things. I, I totally think the Tourism Reserve Board, the Peoria Visitors Bureau, though, those are all things that contribute to making the Civic Center thrive, but let's not forget, without that building next door to us, none of this happens. So I just want us to keep that in mind as, as we move forward and the budget process unfolds. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Director?
I'll move on to the question number two, which was about tax deductible revenue options that council would have to implement if council chose to. Really, looking around at the, the types of deductions that are allowed by the IRS, really fall into property taxes, personal property taxes, and income taxes. In terms of what we have the statutory authority to do anything with, unfortunately, the answer is the only option we have is property taxes. We do not have the ability to levy a local income tax, we do not have the ability to level a personal property tax like the, some states, for example, will charge you the value of your vehicle to renew, to renew your vehicle. That is tax deductible for you, but that is not something that we have in, in our toolbox as an option. The only other caveat I wanted to put at that, and obviously there are ongoing discussions about the SALT deduction at the federal level, there was some changes in, in the existing bill that's now moved off to the Senate. Right now, in current law, that, that cap is still ten thousand dollars, so you only get to claim the first ten thousand of your property taxes. So I just wanted to have that kind of in the back of council's mind, that if for some reason that got changed or did not substantially change in this current bill that's going through the legislature, even for some folks, they'd be capped out at that ten thousand, even if we had a tax deductible option. And so with that, I'm available if there's any questions on that item specifically.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, as I discussed with Madam Mayor earlier before the meeting, to me, this, these report backs are really designed for open up discussions, not to scare people, especially the people from the Civic Center. I mean, I, it's, I think it's important that we educate. When I'm out on the campaign, a lot of us were on a camping trail the last few months, I mean, there's total lack of education for some of our constituents, and that's, that's the goal of these reports back. I want my people, our people, to understand the budget, how their tax dollars are being spent or invested, whatever word you want to pick. So it's not, this is, the goal of this report back is not to scare people from the Civic Center, okay? Without the Civic Center, there's no downtown Peoria, there's no vibrancy downtown, so we all understand that. So it's not, my goal is not to scare anybody. I just want to have discussion when we, a few months from now, when we have a budget, start the budget discussion, that people know where the money goes and how, now, how all the, the money is, is, broke up now, where all, how these accounts are at. That's the goal tonight for me, just to make sure, understand that. So we're not gonna do a class on taxes tonight, but since you talked about the SALT tax, can you tell us who uses the SALT tax usually in Peoria, Illinois?
So in terms of who is eligible for that deduction, it's obviously homeowners, and so, for the most part, depending on your tax status, you may not even fully use that deduction, because you still may be below a standard deduction. But for some communities, especially in the Chicago area, that reduction was relatively a big loss for their tax deductibility of their property taxes, and so it really depends on the individual tax status for that homeowner.
So most people in Peoria would be really on the standard deduction, right? Which would be thirty thousand dollars for married couple and fifty thousand dollars for a single.
I would say on average, that's where most people have landed.
Yeah, enough about taxes. No more question, Madam Mayor.
Please proceed.
All right, I'll move on to number three. So this question was about if we took away the grant dollars that the city has received since twenty-one to today, what is really the growth in our budget over that time period? And so just doing this analysis, I looked at the general fund, primarily because as we get into the next report back, that's really the only fund that we have other than our capital fund that doesn't have some restriction on use. And so in those cases, it's really dollars in, dollars out for, for grant type things, so it wasn't gonna change the analysis really at all. And so really what this shows is that between twenty twenty-one and the twenty twenty-five budget, our revenues in totality are up two point nine four percent. On the expense side, we are up five point six percent between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-five. And I want to be very clear, that's not an annual increase, that is our total increase. So, you know, to put that in context, during some of that time period, we saw inflation rates of five, six, seven percent. And so what this actually shows is that staff have been able to keep expenses around a one percent increase in the general fund over that five-year period, and that even includes where we've seen increases in our police and fire pension obligations. And so I actually think staff had done a really good job of containing costs while still providing services when you strip out those grant dollars. And I have, I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Craddy, I, I agree a hundred percent with, what you just said. I just got a couple of questions on that page. Tell us about twenty twenty-one versus twenty twenty-two on the revenue. What happened to the one thirteen, one hundred thirteen million dollars growing to one hundred thirty-five million dollars?
Yep, so that was primarily driven by, that was the largest growth year that we've seen in personal property replacement tax. So how the city usually allocates those dollars is we will budget for their use for pension obligations, then any remain, and then the library, and then any remaining dollars that are left go into the general fund. We had close to eighteen million dollars that in twenty twenty-two that was unallocated, that went into the general fund. And so, you know, in some ways, we're dealing with that now as we start to see continued pullbacks, because that number and that formula wasn't correct, but that's why you saw that larger spike in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. What has been the inflation rate in those last five years?
It's been anywhere from, you know, two to three percent the last year or so, but really, we've seen five, six percent, a good chunk of this time period.
So our expenses went up on the average about five point six percent, so I believe this body's done a great job, the last five years anyway, with our expenses, and that's credit to our Mr. Manager, Mr. Urick, for his recommendation on the budget. Last point I want to make, I mean, the difference between the revenues and the expenses is about three point six percent on the negative side. So I just want my, again, my colleague to understand that three point six percent, it's not a big percentage, but on a hundred twenty-five million dollars, which is our budget for the general fund, that's four point five million dollars. And we all know, now, some of us were not there, but a lot of us were there a few years ago when we had to, you know, we're short a couple million dollars and, and, and we're struggle to, to find some solution to that. So I encourage all of us, and Mr. Craddy's done an exceptional job to really give us a warning and make sure that we're careful with our spending. So that's all, all the question I have for this page. Thanks.
Moving on to question number four, which was what, what funds does the city have, and are there any restrictions with those dollars? And so this report back shows that really the main funds that the city uses, we have twenty-seven funds, a good chunk of those are things like TIF funds. But really, the, the main thing, the main takeaway is the general fund is the only fund that there is not restrictions in terms of use of those dollars that are in the general fund. Those are the dollars that we have for general purposes. Most of the funds there is restricted use, for example, a TIF fund, they have to be used for TIF-related expenses in that, in that boundary, and so those are restricted dollars. We do have a, we do have two funds that are partially restricted, that's not necessarily, I would say, a governmental accounting standards official definition, but the capital fund, for example, we do receive some revenues that are directly required, i.e. some of our gambling revenues, that have to be used for capital expenditures, so some of those dollars have to be used for that purpose. In the OPEB fund, I call that out specifically, because that is intended for us to use towards our long-term liabilities for, for kind of post-employment benefits for our employees, but that we do use that from time to time as a loan source for, so for example, when the council approved the early retirement incentive back in twenty twenty-one, instead of paying the seven point two five percent from IMRF, the city decided instead to make a loan from the OPEB fund to pay that, and instead charge ourselves three percent. So we saved almost four and a half percent interest on those dollars by immediately putting it into IMRF and not doing it as, as a upfront payment to IMRF that way. So really, those dollars are intended for that purpose, but we do have that ability to, to do like a loan like that. So just wanted to kind of call those specifically out, but really, the main takeaway is the general fund is our only really unrestricted fund that we have.
Does this include all of our TIFs? Is everything in there?
So it has all of them so far that have increment. So the two most, the two most recently established TIFs do not have increment yet, so we've not opened the fund yet. They'll be open for the next budget cycle.
Okay, and those are Distillery and what else?
Uh, Galena Road.
Galena, okay, thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions on this one. Interest rate that we charge ourselves, where does it go?
So those dollars go back into the OPEB fund, so for that specific loan, we're repaying the OPEB fund via our IMRF dollars, and it goes into that fund, which helps us handle some of that, that growing liability that we have.
Question for maybe Mr. Manager. The capital fund, okay? How do we grow that account?
I'm sorry, Councilman, which fund?
The capital fund?
The capital fund?
Yes.
Well, I mean, you, you need a dedicated funding stream in order to be able to do that. In years past, we've utilized telephone, the utility tax from, from telephones as a dedicated funding stream going in. We use, as Director Craddy said, we use gambling receipts from the riverboat that goes in, and we utilize that for that. That's a policy decision that the council can make as we start the budget to say, we want to, generally, it would have to come out of the general fund. You'd have to take a revenue stream out of the general fund and say, we're gonna put this in and dedicate it for capital improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Craddy, one hundred sixty-six million dollars, getting four, five percent interest on our money, where does that money go?
So it gets allocated to the fund based off of how much cash on hand they have, so their fund balance. So for example, you know, a good amount of that obviously goes to the general fund with the reserves at forty million. So really, it goes based off the percentage of the overall amount of cash we have for each fund is the credit they get for the interest we earn.
Could we credit those amounts to capital fund, example?
We can, and that is a, that would be a policy change. The only caveat I would put with that is we do have, for example, our state motor fuel tax fund, that is required by state statute that we have to give that fund the earnings on our dollars. We do run into some of those with like grant dollars as well. It'd be a little bit in the weeds of having to figure that out, but there's nothing that restricts us from, from necessarily doing that.
And what was that revenue, total revenue last year, twenty twenty-four, for interest only?
It was nine million.
Nine million dollars. $9 million that we did not have eight years ago. And that's a new source, that's definitely a new source of revenue the last few years, correct?
Yeah, the one caveat I would put with that is because a substantial amount of that has gone towards the general fund, kind of like with the other sources of revenue, it would be a draw out of the general fund. So we would have to potentially figure out a different revenue source to fund some of our operations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Could the city create a separate fund to raise money for riverfront development? Or would that need to be done through some other type of entity?
Usually mechanically speaking, it's better if it's an outside entity because of the tax deductibility of gifts that are given for something like that. Also, usually, those organizations are more used to fundraising than government entities. But technically, someone can give a gift to the city that is still tax deductible.
It is still tax deductible.
It's just different than a 501(c)(3). Usually, it's, I have to write a letter saying it's tax deductible and that meets the criteria.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Seer.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I forgot one last question on this page. The, there's, on page 10 of your report that we just finished, there's 28 different accounts. There's 21 or 27 on this one. Can you tell us, talk to us about the one account that has disappeared?
You're going to make me find the needle in the haystack now.
It's Peoria Core.
It is Peoria Core, yeah. And that's just...
Tell us about the money in, left in that account and what will happen to that account, please.
So the remaining amount of funds, to the best of our ability, is being obviously used to continue that program. There's still some of the Edward Settlement Funds that we'll still have to work through. But that will be a council discussion, really more in that July into the budget timeframe of what happens with Peoria Core after this cohort.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Moving on to question number five is what qualifies as a TIF expense? So generally speaking, TIF expenses are limited to redevelopment costs, public improvements, and job training things within the boundaries of that TIF. So it has to be specifically for properties in that TIF. The one caveat I will always put on that is that is subject to the terms of our redevelopment plans. So for example, as we were doing some of the research for Peoria Core, all of our TIF plans except the stadium TIF allow for job training-related activities. I think obviously that's because that TIF is specifically for the stadium, so it didn't make sense in that case. But really, if we have a more strict requirement in our redevelopment plan, that trumps what the state statute is and what was in this report back really is that state statutory amounts.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question, maybe city manager also. I was scared a little bit, I guess, when I read the, we can use this money for private development and for land acquisition. Can you give us an arrow, do we charge ourselves interest on that money when we use that money? And do we have to pay it back? Talk to us a little bit about if we use some of these TIF money for land acquisition or private development.
Well, generally speaking, that's been where a developer is eligible to be reimbursed from the property taxes that they pay on the development and the investment that they make. A TIF-eligible expense under the TIF Act is land acquisition. So a good example of that, and I'm just going to point to it as I'm thinking of it, is Chick Apartments and Chick Lofts. That property was acquired by the developer. That developer is building a brand-new apartment complex on that. He's going to be reimbursed, new construction, he's not eligible for reimbursement on that. The cost of the land acquisition underneath it, that underlying expense, and the cost of the renovation on the Chick condos, on the flats, that's eligible for reimbursement under the TIF Act. So we'll go to great lengths when we create a redevelopment agreement that outlines what the developer is getting reimbursed for as part of the project. And generally, most of the TIF reimbursement projects that we come back with, it's about 20%, 25%, some maybe even 30% is the amount of the TIF reimbursement that's coming back to them as a total project cost. They're out getting their private financing, they're out doing that work, that's where that comes into play in terms of that reimbursement for land acquisition. So it's talking about it in terms of a private development and looking at it from that perspective.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to number six, the difference between the actuarially requested contribution and the state minimum contribution. So starting, I believe, in 2022, the state, the city began making our police and fire contributions at the actuarially requested amount. So the example in your packet looks at what the requested amounts versus the state minimum is going to be for next year. And so as you can see, that difference in terms of, the actual request is going to be about 36.1 million versus the state minimum request, which is 33.7 million. So that difference is 2.4, a little bit over, closer to 2.5 million. Really, the difference is the actuarially requested contribution is based off of trying to, more than anything else, slope on a lower level, your increases in your contributions. The state minimum will absolutely start to, will show you a very steep curve. And so what will happen is if we were to revert back to the state minimum amount, we're going to pay for it on the back end. So we're going to pay more in 2035 through 2039 because there are 10 years that there was no interest earned on that, on those dollars that the plan could have had. And so that was really a lot of the change of why we made that change, knowing that, you know, as we've talked to council a number of times, right now, that slope looks at about an $80 million contribution in 2040 with nothing else changed. And so this is really trying to put more dollars into the pension plans that can earn a higher rate of return than the dollars can make sitting in our account because they're not, they have more options for investments than we do. And cutting off the top of that mountain a little bit, so we don't have such a steep ramp up in our contribution requirements. That's, that's really the difference. Like, the actuaries also look a little bit more detailed at our historical numbers. Really, the state minimum just looks at, here's your rate of return, here's your assets, and does an analysis. The actuaries get a little bit more in-depth with our specific performance.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is not the right place to have this discussion tonight, but I just want my colleague to understand that I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't stop or cut or payment to the pension, that's not what I'm saying at all. But what I'm saying is about five, six, seven, eight years from now, whoever's in these seats around the horseshoe will have to make a big decision, which is, the city managers talked to us about that before, and Director Craddy just said, eventually, we'll have to cut the top of the mountain off and issue some bonds. So depending on what your values are and what your beliefs are, I mean, to me, that's the only plan. If our elected official in Springfield don't come to our help, to our aid, we'll have to do something the next seven or eight years, okay? And that might be just a bond paying, you know, so we can have a level payment for many years to come. If you believe that, if we ever had, all I want to put on table again is, if we're ever short $2.5 million, guess where we can find it? Right there. If you believe eventually we'll have to bond the pension for wherever the payment would be, that's, that's the only reason it's there, okay? And it's, and we're not going to have a discussion about that tonight, but it all comes down to our personal preferences and our value and how we feel about that. So that's, that's why that's there. Thank you very much for this information. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Riegenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is one of those discussion points that I think makes everybody's eyes glaze over. And I appreciate Councilman Seer bringing this up now because this is something that's going to be a real discussion point as we, we move forward. Do we make the minimum required payment on our credit card in our households? Or do we pay as much as we feel we can afford? And that oversimplifies it, and Director Craddy did a great job explaining the difference between the minimum and actuarially requested amounts. This will be a big discussion point moving forward, and I think Councilman Seer is, this is good for us to have this in the front of our minds as, as we process this because this is, this is serious. These numbers, just for those of you that are listening, we're talking about an actuarially requested pension payment of $36 million this year. That, these numbers are mind-boggling. And my biases as will unfold as the discussions go forward will be for my kids and future grandkids, I want to pay down as much of this now as we can, and we'll go tooth and nail probably about that in the future. But I just think this is some mind-boggling numbers that we have to start wrapping our arms around. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilmember Riegenbach, I hope I'm not the source of eye glazing, but I might be. But Director Craddy, please correct me if I have the wrong impression on paying ahead on pensions. If we pay ahead a dollar today, the effect of that is going to be greater than a dollar ultimately. It will involve what that extra dollar earned in the meantime, before it was actually due, or if we're, if we do this on a regular basis. Do I have that, do I have that correct?
Correct, because there is the assumed interest rate that is earned on those dollars. Now, can that actual performance fluctuate year to year? Of course, it's like, it's like anything when you're involving the stock market or bond market.
Yeah.
But really, these are long-term investments. And so on average, they are earning closer to their actual assumed interest rate.
Yes, I, okay, thank you very much for that because I think that needs to be known around the horseshoe, but certainly by the public to say we, we are, we have had the flexibility, financial flexibility, to pay up more than the minimum. And that's going to give, that's a very good financial move to make because that money, that new money that was not required is going to be earning. It isn't just that flat amount that we're going to save. We're going to save that flat amount plus the earnings. So I just wanted to make sure, I don't know if that was eye glazing or not, Councilman Riegenbach, but I think that needs to be understood. Thank you, Director Craddy, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to make sure, Director Craddy just made a great point, and I want to make sure my colleague, Mr. Kelly, understands. So when we make an extra $25,000, 2.5 million a year extra payment, if there's a guarantee that 10 years or by 2040, we will have more money there.
As with investing, there's never a guarantee. You can't look at past...
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure, too, my colleague says, you know, we pay, let's pay more so we have more money at the end. Well, it should be that, like that, but it's not because we have investing board that have some guidelines, and some years we lost money and some years we made money. So I just want to make sure, not because we pay more money means that our hole will be smaller down the road. It won't, there's just no guarantee about that. I just want to make sure my colleagues and our constituents understand that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly.
I would like to thank Councilman Seer for that. And I, I would like to put out a clarion call to our legislators that the police and fire pension fund investment program in Springfield, or the rules of the game, would match those of IMRF. IMRF is a terrific, terrifically well-invested pension plan. Police and fire pension funds are way back on that. And since that money's being aggregated now, et cetera, we need to get more on board with what current long-term pension investment looks like. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Mr. Manager.
So the state did change. It used to be that each of the pension funds were individually managed. We still have local pension boards, they make duty disability determinations for the members that are of the, of each of the police or fire that are injured in the line of duty. But they do a little bit of investing decisions just in terms of how much cash they have on hand. But most of the investment decisions are now made by statewide pension boards, and that money has been aggregated, it's in a segregated account, just like we have with IMRF. And then they make those investment decisions. The police pension board rents space from us right across the street.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's the statewide pension board, and their offices are here in Peoria. They did expand when they, when they created that, they expanded that to include more of the investment authority like IMRF has. And it's proven that it's actually increased the amount of investment returns for the pension funds and lowered the administrative overhead. So that's, that's been a positive with doing that. One of the challenges that we haven't really talked about here tonight for us that we need to think about, when we go out and borrow money, we have to get rated by the rating agencies. And one of the consistent negative comments that they have about Peoria is the fact we don't have a plan for addressing pensions in terms of funding. Because our fund, we are paying, as we have moved to pay the required, actuarially required contribution, some would argue that is the minimum requirement we should be making and not, not the requirement that we're paying at the statutory minimum. And, and what they've said is we're paying out more in pensions than we're even putting in, even with the investments that are being made by the pension boards. So that's what they're going to look at and say, you need to catch up and be able to actually start putting money away, which is still another $4 or $5 million from where we are today. So, so, and that's over and above the, the actuarially required contribution level. So, and, and that affects us with our cost of capital if they continue to downgrade our credit rating in terms of our borrowing costs in the future as well.
So over the last few years, we have, especially with, you know, pandemic or ARPA funding, we have put in more. So hasn't, I mean, what effect, impact has that had?
Well, this year, as we, we'll probably come talk to you, as we look at the budget, this is a year where we would traditionally come back and say, we're going to, we're going to look at doing some borrowing. We'll have another credit rating that review with S&amp;P or Moody's, and, you know, we'll have that report. But we can share the last reports that we got, so you can see, they're very positive about our ability to raise money, they're very positive about our management controls and our ability to manage the finances of the organization. They just, they really hit us when it comes to, you know, our, our plan for paying for pensions in the long term.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say the only, at least in my tenure with the city, the only change we've seen in our rating is we went from negative outlook to a stable outlook. And that was primarily driven by the increase in our reserve levels in the general fund. The sticking point for the rating agencies of moving up to a AA rating, which is really where I think we would start to see some substantial savings in how we issue, is really about the pension issue. And they will continue to say it's about the pension issue even with reserve levels in the 40-ish percent range.
Okay, thank you.
Last one is the, this was requested by Mayor Ali. This is the history of the allocation changes for LGDF. So LGDF, or the Local Government Distributed Fund, is the designated portion of state income taxes the city receives on a per capita basis. income taxes the city receives on a per capita basis. Historically, that number had hovered around 10% of all state income taxes. Beginning in 2011, the state reduced that number down to 6% and then hovered it back up to around 8% in 2015, back down towards 6 again. And currently, we sit at 6.47%. It's a fun number, I know. But this is an item that the Illinois Municipal League annually negotiates heavily with the legislature. We've seen, we're talking 0.10% to 0.20% increases in the distribution amounts annually. That's the number that they're really arguing about. But obviously, as you can also see in the report back, we are budgeted to receive $19,795,200 based off the IML estimate at the 6.47%. If the number was returned to 10%, as historically had been, we'd be talking about receiving a little bit over $30.6 million. So that is a substantial amount of dollars that the city used to get and no longer gets. And so, it really is what we deal with when we are looking strictly to the state for some of those shared revenue dollars, is unfortunately, we can end up in situations where dollars are pulled back like this.
Yeah, this is a real sore spot for cities throughout the state. And I don't know who was here in 2011. Were you here in 2011 when that dropped? I mean, that's so steep. Are you, were you city manager at that time, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you remember the cut?
Yeah, we do. We, in 2011 and going into that budget year in 2012, we made some significant headcount reductions because of it.
This is why cities feel like they're being robbed, that we're not getting our, our full LDL, excuse me, LD, LGDF of 10%. And constantly, IML is fighting 24/7 to try to increase it, you know, at least to 8%, back to 8% and try to, you know, work our way up. But I encourage you to get involved with IML, Councilmen. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last question. Can you explain to us the clawback, please?
Yeah, so going back to the discussion on PPRT, so personal property replacement tax, there's no other way to say it, but the state had the formula wrong in terms of their allocation of corporate income tax receipts to municipalities. They over-allocated for a two-year period. And what they have been doing is obviously, is they also have corrected the formula, they've also been clawing back some of the amounts that we were due. Coming into state budget year 2026 here this year, we're still not sure that they're done. There's been discussions that they're done with the clawbacks, so we could see at least some bounce back in that number. But it seems like this is admittedly a constantly moving target from the state in terms of what that formula looks like.
What was that amount last year?
Understanding the exact amount of what they're clawing back isn't necessarily easy, but the reduction that we saw in terms of receipts was in the neighborhood of $5 million.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you, Director Craddy. Lots of good work.
Oh, I believe we need to receive and file.
Do we need to receive and file?
Yes, we do. We need a motion to receive and file.
Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Carmona to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're on to unfinished business. 25-65 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with request concur with recommendation from the planning and zoning commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R1 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 223 West Detwiler Drive, Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item has been on the agenda a couple times. It's been deferred. Leah Allison, our Assistant Community Development Director, is here to answer any questions. Maybe turn it over to the district councilman.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Allison, for all your help. Been a lot of research, a lot of work for this. And a special, a special use is required to meet specific standards, as stated in our Unified Development Code, relate to safety and comfort. This short-term rental will have a negative impact on a safety, comfort, and overall use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding neighborhood. I move to deny this request.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmembers Kelly. Discussion, Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was curious, I looked for the information, and maybe I just overlooked it regarding the distance between the homes on each side of it. This is actually an area that I drive through at least regularly enough, because I think it's absolutely beautiful. It's just a place I go clear my mind. But I've never pulled into a driveway in this area, and today I did. And I was really concerned with the proximity between the, I guess, on the driveway side, that fence, and I saw like a playground area, swing set. And looked really close. Do you have the, like, the, the distance between the homes?
I apologize, I do not have that dimension.
Okay. And I apologize for not asking in advance. I try to do that, but I just, like, right before coming to council, I was, let me pull in the driveway, and I saw that. And it was pretty concerning to me. And because of that, and other factors as well, because I think this is a neighborhood that it would take away. I don't think a traffic would be an issue because I'm one of those people that drive through it, and I don't live there, with the park going down. So I agree with, I won't be able to support this Airbnb in this location. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Kelly, did you have a request here?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't believe it's necessary.
Okay.
But thank you.
All right, you're welcome. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at new business.
Is there any new business? Councilmember Kelly?
Don't want to hold everybody up here, but thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Corporation Counsel, or perhaps Mr. Manager, either of the two, I'm interested in, with this last item, this home is on a septic system. Those of us who aren't on septic, which is almost everybody in the city, speaking for myself, I don't know much about septic systems. And if I'm going to rent an Airbnb someplace, and it has septic, I'm not, I'm not sure I know what to do, or how to affect that. I would consider, with information, restricting short-term rentals in the city of Peoria to only those properties that are on a sewer. But I'm not sure I know precisely what I'm asking. And I wonder if we could get a report back on that so that we might consider that question.
Sure, I think we'd be happy to put together a report back on that item.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I think those discussion items Councilman Seer brought up might be a prelude to the consequence of having three financial advisors sitting around this horseshoe, so stay tuned. We've just begun. But I would like to ask for a policy session for the third week in June, June 17th, to address our ongoing issue with the unsheltered population. The Motel project will be winding down, and I think it's important for us to have some next steps in place. Perhaps we could get the Dream Center, Phoenix, some of the Kate Green from the Continuum to come and give us an update on, on where things stand more globally as far as where, and then give us an opportunity to give staff some direction for the future.
Yes, that's a great idea, and we've had some discussions about that. Mr. Manager, can you speak to this?
Yes, we'd be happy to, to look at, trying to get the Gateway Building to do this. We'd, if I could indulge and ask if we could also include in a policy session that night some discussion on the CSO projects and where we are, and kind of give our council an update on that. I think it would be very help, very helpful if we could have that conversation that evening as well.
Okay. Are we agreeable? Any objections? This would be, we have a meeting on June the 10th, so we would insert this meeting that following week, which would be the 17th, at the Gateway Building, maybe dinner?
Sure.
Include dinner?
We can include that.
And first, we'd start with the unhoused population and then go to CSO.
Okay. We all good? No objections? All right. Thank you, Councilman Riegenbach.
Hi.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, thank you. I spoke with the police chief earlier today, and I just wanted to make a formal request for a report back on the residential police officer program. There's a lot of things happening within the department, and he said he'd be happy to do that. So thank you, Chief. But I did want to make that official, that we'll be getting a report back on, on that. And then I just wanted to call out Public Works for their work on Fulton Plaza. Couple years ago, I was having lunch out there with one of my daughters, and it was just kind of depressing. And walking by there today at the Adams Street site, at least, I know there's still work going on here on Jefferson, but the Adams Street site, it's beautiful. The plants are coming back. They've got a couple years' growth in it, so shout out to Public Works for their work on that. And finally, I'm sure we've all got people reaching out to us regarding energy aggregation. And, Mr. Manager, thank you for getting that email out. And I don't know if you want to offer any high-level bullet points on that now, or...
No, I'd, I'd be happy to, and thank you. You know, since 2012, we had a referendum that created the Peoria Municipal Aggregation Program. And so, we've purchased energy along with the county, along with a number of other municipalities from throughout central Illinois. And we've, we've utilized that buying power to basically try and buy energy at a lower rate than, than what Ameren has been charging. And, you know, we've been doing that. And, and what we did three years ago with this last contract was we included a capacity adder in that. So, in essence, we were buying at a fixed rate, which was about 9.8 cents. And then we had, our capacity fluctuates with the change in electricity capacity. And there's an entity called MISO, which buys, or regulates the grid within central, the central part of the United States and part of Canada. And within that, this past auction, April, they had an auction, and the summer months came back at $666 a megawatt per day. Now, that's compared to $30 that it's been previously in the past, so it's significantly higher. So that kicked our costs up for what our, our costs are going to be in the summer months, really going to start after the July readings for the residents that are, that are in the city's program. For Ameren residents, it's going to start June 1st. They're going to start to see that their numbers are going up, and their costs are going up. Theirs is going up, almost a 50% jump just in the cost of electricity. So we're going to see that, that it's going to be about a $13 to $15 increase in costs of work from where they're currently at is what that increase is going to be for our residents that are in our program. Now, so everyone got letters from Home Field Energy, who we buy through until the end of December. That's when our, or through December, when that program ends. And then we'll, we'll be working on another contract at that point in time. There's an opportunity for residents to opt out. And so, our rate is going to be about 12.9 cents per kilowatt hour. The cost for Ameren is at 12.2 cents. So it's going to be roughly cheaper, roughly about $40, I think, is in calculating that, cheaper over the next five months to be on, on Ameren than being on the city's program. So individuals can opt out if they want to. There's a card that they get in the mail from Home Field. You can just make that, that decision on your own. If you're out, you have to stay out for a year, though. So, you know, there's no guarantee with where Ameren's having to purchase electricity, where their rates are going to be. Again, we're looking at, at a couple of different options and discussions with the buying group to try and look at how we might be able to change that, modify that going forward. But, so everyone should have received a letter from Home Field. It has a card in there. You can fill that out and send that in if you want to opt out. If you don't, you don't have to do anything. You can just stay with the program and do it as it is.
Thank you very much. I got my letter yesterday, but solar's looking better and better every day. You're still...
I'm, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly? New business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment. This letter that I got also about the aggregation continued to bother me, as these letters have bothered me. We've had a lot of people out there for decades now, talking about getting rid of all that old terrible, those old terrible power plants, and we got a new deal here, and it's going to be great. And costs for electricity have skyrocketed under this. And poor people, and poor people in Peoria are not exempt from this. And based on ideology that has not produced, it has not kept its promise, but by golly, it's an ideology. These, everyone has suffered, but the poor, who have a whole lot less financial flexibility than the middle class or the upper class, they've really, percentage-wise, they've really borne the brunt of this. And I, I think it's terrible. Now, we've got the feds pushing this, we've got the state pushing this. You mentioned solar. Solar's looking better all the time. Guess what? Guess who pays for that? Taxpayers with the subsidies. Otherwise, no one would have it, except a sign out in the middle of nowhere that, you know, that needs power. I just, we keep going down this road. We can't do anything about it. I, I agree. We're not, we're not in charge. But all of the wonderful, wonderful promises that we've had, when we, when the air was very clean, those power plants that we were shut down, they won award after award after award of how clean they were, but it didn't matter. Facts don't matter. Only ideology does. And so, everyone gets harmed here, but the poor get harmed the most. But they're just, we have to sacrifice them for the ideology. End of salvoque. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Manager, just back to the policy session on the 17th, what time are we looking at starting?
5:00 PM if we could.
Five o'clock.
Jump right in. We'll do the first half of the policy session, and then break, and then come back for the second half.
Okay, 5:00 versus 6:00 then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council. We have not received any cards.
Cards, okay.
So we would be at executive session.
Okay. I would like to invite a motion to adjourn into convenient closed session immediately following the adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 122C5 to discuss the purchase of real property for the use of the public body, including discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 122C11 to discuss pending litigation and pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 122C21. pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 122C21 for approval by the body of closed session minutes. Can I get a motion, please? Moved by Councilmember Gordon Young, seconded by Councilmember Carmona. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.